The gym in this building. And then if we're interested, we can take a walk up to the convent as well. Essentially a chapel and an old convent quarters and some living spaces that are available to us in this purchase as well. So why don't we head on through? So the school address, mailing address is technically 116 Beecher. So the entrance of butts on the Beecher Avenue side. We have the parking in the back and on the side as well. You see entering into the gym there. You've got some gang bathrooms. And here we come across the first floor. And there's a floor above us which is essentially identical to this with classrooms on either side. You take a peek in the rooms. You look in the back door here and either side, they're basically the same. These are large classrooms, which gives us a decent amount of flexibility with how we might use them. We will likely do some upgrades similar to what we did at St. Joe's with respect to maybe some ceiling coverage, LED lights, drop ceiling, put in some different wiring to get more Wi-Fi coverage for our technology needs and so forth. But as you can see, the guts of the building are solid and sort of your classic shoebox Catholic school on this side of it. It connects and we'll go up the stairs here to the older building, the original school building. And that has three floors. And so it's offset up these stairs a little bit and we could check out that side. This is that main entrance on Beecher I was referring to. And the administrative office is here. Yeah, so it's very similar. You know, solid brick, cinder block type of building. Large rooms, high ceilings. So this area, you can see they did some upgrades with the drop ceiling and the electrical work here. So the size of the rooms, you know, the ceilings and so forth give a lot of flexibility for a variety of uses that we may consider for education purposes at really all level of grade can kind of fit in these spaces. We'll take a run up these stairs here and then we'll circle sort of back across. So again, I think similar setup as below. You see large rooms, solid guts to the building, very good shape and quite similar to some of our older buildings that we have across the district. So our familiarity with this type of heating system, this type of electrical and so forth is really consistent. So I think a lot of it's really cosmetic and fitting it up to the specific needs of the programming that the Board of Ed may decide, really. And, you know, large enough to fit a sizable capacity. So we could stroll back across. So another little office area here, it's sort of above with the administrative offices below. But then you basically get a mirror image of what's downstairs that we walked through, classrooms on either side all the way down. Stairwell in the middle here and the stairwell at the end back to the gym, which would really serve as the cafeteria as well. So you have your gym and your cafeteria. If you noticed in there, you could see when we go out, there's kitchen setup in there. Our food service folks have been through and they could set up there pretty easily and service it from our central kitchen, essentially retherming meals here. And a light operation here, mostly meals being brought in. Okay? Hey, Father.
Hello.
Yep, he met us on the other side. So I took you through the main areas for the academic areas. In the older building, there is a level below that has some rooms that they were using for their religious education program. Still have some of their Catholic pieces in there, but that's just a couple more rooms that could be converted to classrooms down there and then new access to the boiler rooms and so forth. So I didn't pop you down there, but there's just a bunch of stuff they're still working through. But those are all workable rooms and we've already planned we'd be upgrading and replacing the boilers. So that would all be done as part of our sort of fit up and taking over the building. And then we'd just repurpose those rooms down there in that basement area. Again, could be classrooms or other office space or storage utilized down there. But the real main pieces are the classroom areas here and in the older building and the administration in the middle. It's essentially it. And we'll have parking on this side and then the parking behind the building as well. So we'll take a run down these stairs. We'll head back to the gym. And if folks are interested, we can hit the convent after I spin the other folks through. Oh, you're quite welcome. So Paul, do you want to do Alder's and Board of Ed? I think, yep. Jason and Ann, yeah. We'll do the two boards together. All right, folks, so we're leaving the gym area. That would serve as the gym and the cafeteria. There's a food section in there, so we'd be able to deliver meals from our new central kitchen right to the back there, rethurm them in there. The food service folks have checked that all out. And we'd be able to run, put cafeteria tables in there, run our meal program and then use that gym for PE and then obviously for athletics after. There's gang bathrooms here. And then we basically enter into the academic areas. So we'll walk through the nickel tour here. But what you're going to see essentially is a classic Catholic school, essentially shoebox design, classrooms on this floor, all identical to the classrooms we'll see when we go upstairs. And then this connects to the original building, which is a little bit older. And there's classrooms in there as well. And first and second floor, which is slightly up these stairs, we'll walk through there. And then below that, in that older building, is where the boilers are. And there's some what they use for religious education classes, but they can be converted back to classrooms. They've got, they've pushed down their, some of their property that they're sorting through down there, so a little bit messy down there. So it's just a couple more rooms below. And then the boiler rooms, which we're going to be replacing those boilers as well. So we'll just breeze through the academic area. You'll see pretty large rooms, so they're very flexible for us to utilize for different purposes depending on the program design that's selected. You'll see when we get into the other building, they did some upgrades to some lights, they put in some LEDs, actually did some drop ceiling work in there. I think that's something we may consider in this area as well, like we did at St. Joe's. For those of you who've been through there, put in the drop ceilings so we can run the wiring for the IT and phone system and upgrades that we'll need to do. It just makes it a little bit easier and we can sort of hide everything. The school main entrance is here. It's on 116 Beecher. So we could probably do Alder Hunter here can, we'll figure out bus drop off, whether it's right in the front, as I think they used to do. Or we'd have access to the back as well. And we could pop him into the gym and so forth. But principal office or administrative office is right here, you know, the front access there. And teachers can access from the back and park in the back. And then we have the lot on the side as well. So we'll take a run up here to the older building, which actually looks better with some of the renovations they've done. So again, as we walk through here, I think you sort of have a flash of some memories of many of our other older buildings. A lot of similarities, brick, cinder block. The heating systems and electrical systems here are very similar to what we have in many of our older buildings. We'll be doing some upgrades here with the fit up as we take ownership. But our custodial team is very familiar with this kind of building and these kind of tile and this kind of setup. So it's a pretty easy transition for us. As we come in and do some fit up, we may do some more tiling and less carpeting and things like that, but it would be more cosmetic than anything else. The outer areas of the building are solid. It's really just replacing and upgrading the boilers is the main, the main big piece we'll do. But again, as you see that the rooms in here, it's interesting ceilings, but they're very high ceilings. So if we wanted to replace those lights and put in some LEDs and do a drop ceiling, and that would make it a little more energy efficient in those rooms as well. But just with the width and the height of the room, it's just a lot of options to adjust to whatever the need that the Board of Ed decides to do for which age level and which type of program we'll bring in. So we'll take a run up these stairs and we'll just walk back through and you'll see the second floor here and across to the second. Thank you, sir. So again, you'll see here, it's kind of, it's a mirror image of what was below. So just more classrooms and space. They'll be leaving the desks and chairs as we see fit. So we'll be able to repurpose a lot of the furniture as needed. And I think the way the building is separated to some degree, and I think they use it this way and we could, you could separate ages, older kids here, younger kids there, vice versa, which sets up nicely for that. So you could have different sections of the building traveling at different times and lunch waves and things like that. So the separation actually, I think, works to your favor to create different spaces, different uses, if that's what the Board decides to do. So again, from my perspective, there's a lot of flexibility in the way it's set up, but a lot of simplicity as well. So it's from the maintenance perspective. There's a stairwell in the middle here that goes back down. We'll cut across back to the second floor over here. So the way the last documents had it, they had the older kids on the upper level. And you'll see in these rooms, some examples of the different types of academics. So in here, they have their science room, which had some science tables and hookups in here. So water and gas and so forth are available for us to sort of reach into and redesign as needed. But again, you kind of have that administrative or offices in the middle. And then it's the classroom spaces coming all the way down with a gang bathroom at the end. And you all came in through that back lot, but you can see out here, there's a pretty sizable lot on this side of the building and then leads up to where the convent is up the hill. So essentially, our property kind of L's up to the convent and sort of around the church and the rectory that stays up at the top of the hill with the parish. Okay? So we'll slide back down to the gym. Thank you. So that's the nickel tour of the school. If anyone's interested in taking a stroll up the hill, we can do a look at the convent. I could tell you, for those of you who have been in St. Joe's convent, it's a very similar setup. There's essentially a chapel space, large room as you enter into the left. And then when you go to the right, there's essentially a couple floors, which are really dormitories for religious folks back in the day. It's kind of been converted. They did a number of meetings and so forth in there in recent years. But basically, sort of still has that feel to it of a residential space. So a couple of larger rooms where you might have eating and so forth, but then much smaller rooms for residential dormitory style. So then it's three floors up and some storage and larger space up on the third floor. So if anyone wants to take a run of the city plan, I don't know if you want to take a run up the hill, we could do that. Otherwise, if you're satisfied with that tremendous explanation of what it looks like, we could stop there. So, oh, I'm sorry? Okay, so Board of Ed members that want to go up the hill, Paul, do you think Board of Alder as well? All right, well, city plan as well? Okay. So I've got my first group here. So this is the, this is the old chapel area I was telling you about. So that's a large room there. Obviously, the religious pieces will be going and the large room will be main. As you enter in, there's some small office areas here. And then we'll cut straight down here and you'll see some of the main, the main living space that had a larger room for sort of eating and then dormitory style upstairs. So this floor has some larger rooms that are more or less some common areas. And again, they could be used for a variety of different purposes, whether it's classroom space or pre-K space or office space, a variety of uses. They could be maintained as large rooms. They could be subdivided to smaller rooms or offices and so forth. And you'll see the variety. These are the larger rooms and we'll pop upstairs and you'll see how they're cut up into smaller rooms in the dormitory style. So either way, it could essentially go. Kitchenette back here. There we go. Let me find all my lights. Nope, we're locked up here. We can go down first, I guess. Let's go down first. We'll go down. Thanks, Mike. There's some open meeting spaces. I think the church for the last few years has used this for community use and different meeting groups would come down and use these spaces. So I think with some fit up and some rethought, it could be converted into office use, educational use, variety of things. You know, again, the size of the room and the size of the space gives you some options and opportunities. Swing and you'll see another larger room over here and a room off that underneath the chapel. Back up this way. All right, the city plan folks, you want to stroll through?
Sure.
Obviously, you saw the religious space there. So there's some offices in the front, bathroom here. Coming back through?
We jumped ahead.
You came back behind.
We were waiting on him.
Oh, okay. We got, we got stuck going up. So on this floor, you've got these larger rooms, which essentially are meeting rooms or places where they would eat. And there's a kitchenette back here. So these could be maintained as large rooms and used for classrooms or other educational purposes, or maybe made into smaller office space if that's what you choose to do. If we go upstairs, you'll see these same space essentially cut up into smaller dormitory style rooms. So you can kind of see the different ways it can be used, open place or smaller office spaces and set up like that. We'll walk through and we'll go down and we'll just see the basement area and some of the open spaces down there. Go down from there?
Yeah.
Okay. We got it, we got in down before.
Did you?
Yeah, we couldn't get up. We got down. So some office spaces there and then open spaces and rooms here and over here and underneath where the chapel is. So again, with some fit up and TLC, you can imagine that different uses you could consider for these spaces, whether it's office space or a learning space for a variety of different levels one can consider. Parking on the side and obviously access back to the school down the hill. So if they've, if they've unlocked the upstairs, we can get all the way up, take these, this flight up and you can look at the third floor dormitory. You can peek in here. Another one of the larger rooms over here. And just imagine underneath the chapel space, basically the whole size of the chapel, there's room below it. So you could think about, you know, whether these could be meeting spaces, training spaces, academic programming, after-school programming, a variety of different opportunities. But again, some sort of, you have space, so you have some opportunity to think about redesigning or rethinking. And this, this space obviously needs a little bit of TLC and some fit up, but ultimately, when we decide from the Board's perspective what they want to do, the external guts of the building, I think, are good. It's really more of the aesthetics and fitting it up to suit whatever the need is. So kind of building around the theme or the goal or the desire. We'll take a run up to the third floor and you'll see more of dormitory style and smaller rooms and bathrooms and so forth up there. But again, that could all be converted either into office space or knock down a couple of walls and make it some more academic space or program space also. So again, this was used as, as you would see, kind of a dorm room style, smaller rooms. smaller rooms, living spaces. But if you think about what was below us, again, most of these are not load-bearing walls, so you could rethink this space a little bit. It could remain as it is, and essentially smaller office spaces or workspaces for different programming needs, or if you want to expand it out and put some different programming, I think it's a matter of doing some adjustments to walls and design type of thing. But no big structural issue to worry about. It's just more aesthetic and fit up and kind of make it a little bit younger and more usable. But again, I think if you think from the square foot perspective, this building itself is about 7,000 square feet, all told, so you kind of have three floors of space to play with. There's, above us, there's a little bit of a storage space as well that kind of runs the length of this, believe it or not, a cement floor. So if you want to put a bowling alley up there, we can move it over from St. Joe's and bowl up there. Yeah, we'll go back this way. I think this door's kind of jammed at that end. Thank you.
Everybody good?
Think so, yep. All right.